will now be recorded.
Okay, so what we will do now, we will try to understand and then do a configuration related to accounts payable and accounts receivable in the system. Before that, what we will do, we will try to understand configuration for accounts payable and accounts receivable. Now, when you talk about configuration for accounts payable and accounts receivable, first we need to understand whenever we talk about AP or AR or accounts payable and accounts receivable, it is all about what customer and then vendor, am I right?
Yes.
This is all about customer vendor or vendor and customer. Now let us look at something in such a way that if I write something called vendor or customer. Now how do I identify that this is vendor? Or how do I identify that this is customer? There should be a logic, right?
Yes, sir.
So identify that this is a customer or this is a vendor, the only identification is name. When I say name, it is like name of a person or company. Am I correct?
Yes.
When you are talking about vendor, we are all talking about what purchases or sale.
Yes.
We are talking about purchases. What you will do, you will purchase from a person or you will purchase from a company. Any other possibilities there?
No, sir, either person or company.
No, right? You will be purchasing either from a person or from a company. We are all in a position to identify that this is a person, this is a company by looking at the name or not. We can identify it. Similarly, when you talk about customer, customer is what we do sell. Now, when you want to sell something, what will happen? You will be selling to a cust- you will be selling to a person or you will be selling to a per- company.
Yes, sir.
Either person or either company.
You will be selling to a person or you will sell it to a company. Meaning easy to identify that this is probably a customer or this is probably a vendor.
Yes.
Okay. Now first you need to understand identification of a customer vendor based on name. Name would be individual or company or person or a company. Then we need to understand AP AR process in ECC. AP AR process in
S4.
S4 Hana. We need to understand both. How AP AR works in ECC, how AP AR works in S4 Hana, both we need to understand. When it comes to ECC and when it comes to S4, what exactly it is, we need to have a basic understanding or basic clarity. Here we call it as vendor customer only. When it comes to S4 Hana system, we call it as
Business Partner.
BP vendor and then Customer. Same name, but there is a prefix, right? There is some addition. What is that?
Yes, sir. Business Partner. Business Partner.
BP or business partner is added, otherwise it is exactly the same. There is no difference between ECC system, S4 Hana system, when it comes to AP AR, except BP. If you are in a position to understand BP or business partner, that's it, you are good at AP AR in ECC S4, then there is no change. The only difference is BP. Apart from BP, it is exactly the same between ECC and S4 Hana system. First, we need to talk about configuration. To talk about configuration, what I will do, I will put accounts payable. Then similarly, we will put accounts receivable. AP and then AR. In AP, what we will do was, first I will put vendor account groups. Second one, I will put vendor number ranges. Third, I will put assign number ranges to account group. If you love to put same thing to the accounts receivable, what it would be first one?
Customer account group. Customer accounts groups.
First one, it would be customer account group, okay. Second one?
Customer number ranges.
Customer number ranges.
Customer number ranges, okay.
And assign number ranges to account.
Assign number ranges to account group. So far between AP AR, any change or it is the same logic?
Same logic except vendor and customer.
Alright, it is the same logic. For AP, it is all about vendor. For AR, it is all about customer else, it's the same logic. Now after this, what we do, you will create fourth one. Tolerance group. Here also tolerance group. If you recollect baseline configuration, inside the baseline configuration, we were talking about tolerance group. Under the tolerance group, did we configure any tolerance related to customer vendor or not?
O B A three, sir. Customer and and that all.
Right, we already configured it, right? So it is the same setting even here. Meaning, we don't need to define it here because we already defined it at the time of baseline configuration. So this also we need to ensure as part of your AP config or as part of your AR config. After this, we need to maintain AP reconciliation GL account. Then what it would be here?
AR reconciliation GL account. AR reconciliation GL account.
It would be AR reconciliation GL account. Once this is done, next it would be straight forward. Create vendor master, then what it would be here?
Create customer master.
Create customer master. And then we will do what? Create vendor invoice. What about here?
Create customer invoice.
This would be create customer invoice. And then I would say create vendor credit memo. What about here?
Customer credit memo.
Create customer
Credit memo.
Credit memo. And then it would be create, sorry, vendor payment. And here?
In customer payment.
Create customer payment. Next one, we will let's say vendor line item report. Here?
Customer line item report.
Customer line item report, then I will put vendor balance report. Here? Customer balance report. Then I will put vendor line item browser report. Here?
Customer line item report.
It would be customer line item browser report. And then next point, I would say vendor aging report. Here?
Customer aging report.
Customer aging report. And then we will talk about vendor master tables. And here?
Customer master tables.
Customer master tables. Then here it would be vendor transaction tables. What about here? Customer transaction table. How many points did we write in each?
Fifteen each. Fifteen points each, sir.
We wrote fifteen points in the accounts payable. We wrote fifteen points in accounts receivable. Every point is exactly opposite or not?
Yes.
If you look at AP, vendor account group, AR, customer account group. In AP, vendor number range, in AR, customer number range. Here, assignment of vendor number ranges to vendor account group, here. Assignment of customer number ranges to customer account group. Tolerance group common for both AP reconciliation account, AR reconciliation account, vendor master, customer master, vendor invoice, customer invoice, vendor credit memo, customer credit memo, vendor payment, customer payment, vendor line item report, customer line item report, vendor balance report, customer balance report, vendor line item browser report, customer line item browser report, vendor aging report, customer aging report. One minute. Vendor aging report, customer aging report, vendor master tables, customer master tables, and then vendor transaction tables and then customer transaction table. Everything is exactly opposite to each other or it is any difference. Is there any difference?
No, sir, it is same as opposite.
Correct? It is exactly opposite meaning, if you understand AP, by default you need to understand AR. Or if you are understanding AR, by default you need to understand AP, do not put effort two times. One effort, two point understanding. Clear it?
Yes, sir.
If you are putting your effort on AP, you need to understand AR automatically. On the other way around, if you are putting your effort on AR, AP must be understood by default. Not that AP I will sit separately, AR I will put separately, not not at all required. Okay? Now, these points, whatever we listed so far, how many points are there? Fifteen?
Fifteen each.
These fifteen points are exactly same in SAP ECC. These are exactly same in SAP S4 Hana system. There is no difference between these two. It is exactly same. The only difference which comes into ECC S4 is what? Business partner? It is only the business partner. There is no change in it. If you are talking about S4 Hana system, we need to add three settings related to business partner. How many setting?
Three, three settings.
Three settings we need to add in the business partner. Now, I will put sixteen create business partner number ranges seventeen create business partner group and assign number range eighteen point C V I integration for customer and vendor. Now, these three points are common between these two, so let me keep it common for both of this.
Sir, what is C V I?
Customer vendor integration. Okay, these three are additional points in S4 Hana system. Otherwise, the fifteen points are exactly common between these two. Sixteen, seventeen, eighteen are exclusively applicable in S4 Hana system. Let me edit something S4 Hana. This is also S4 Hana. And this is also S4 Hana. Clear? First fifteen are exactly same in both ECC plus S4 Hana system. The last three, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen are applicable only in S4 Hana system. Understood, right?
BP tables is required, right?
That we will understand later on. At this moment, not relevant. Once we do the configuration, then I will make you understand the tables related to BP. Okay? Now first what we will do, we will try to see how it is exactly working in SAP ECC. This you just need to see how it is working in ECC, then we will collectively configure in S4 Hana system. After looking this in ECC, when we do it in S4, we will practically feel confident, yes, it is the same between ECC S4. Otherwise, we always have a confusion in our mind, right? What is the difference between ECC to S4?
Yes.
Let us make sure this confusion won't be there. I will log into ECC system.
Sir, do we have ECC server with us?
No, we don't have, not required. Okay, anyways, I am showing in the system, ECC, it is not required as it is exactly the same.
Okay.
Okay, so first what we will do is, I will go to this SPRO financial accounting in you. Accounts receivable payable. Let me configure vendor first. Or I will configure customer, anything is okay. Let me go to customer master data preparation. If I go to additional information on the top, again additional information, display key, IMG activity, it will open the transaction codes. Meaning, you can see the T code, most probably the last four digit is your T code. So far, whatever configuration you have done, majority, what is the length of T code?
Four.
Four digits. So same logic under the additional information, take last four digits. From last you take four digit, it will be the transaction code. First one, we were talking about account group, right? Customer account group, what is the T code from here, last four digits?
O B D two. O B D two?
D two. What I will do, I will come to SAP, accounts receivable. I will put O B D two.
For S4 Hana, same T per right?
Same T code. There is no change. Okay, and customer number range, if you look at number ranges. Create a number ranges for customer account, what is the T code? Look at the last four digits.
X D N one.
X D N one. Here number range, let us put X D N one. Similarly, the third one, assignment of number ranges to account group. If I go to this, assign number ranges to customer account group, what is the T code? Look at the last four digits.
O B A R.
AR, let us put O B A R here. Okay, tolerance group, everybody is aware, what is the customer vendor tolerance group?
O B A three.
This is already configured, so no need to configure one more time. GL account creation, everybody is aware, what is it?
F S double zero. F S double zero.
F S double zero. Okay. Now from here, it is not the configuration. From here, it is not the configuration. Config is how many settings?
Five settings, sir.
Config.
Four setting.
Four settings.
Only four. Alright, now let us come to accounts payable. If I come to accounts payable, what I will do, I will simply minimize customer account. I will expand vendor account, master data, preparation, the first one, vendor account group. What is the T code?
O B D three. O B D three.
Oh, here, let me add O B D three. I will keep it red color, okay? And the next one, vendor number ranges. If you look at vendor number ranges, create a number ranges for vendor account. What is the last four digit?
X K N one.
Now let us put X K N one here. Similarly, the next one, assignment of number ranges to account group. If you go there,
O B A S.
Define number ranges to vendor account group, it is your last four digit again, O B A S. Alright, come here, put this, O B A S here. Tolerance group, as usual, what it is? It's a one time setting, common for both. Let us put same T code, O B A three. GL master
F S double zero.
Double zero. Change color because this is not config. How many configurations for AP?
Four.
Alright, now if you look at the account group, what is the T code for GL account group?
O B D four.
O B?
D four.
D four, is this correct? When you recollect chart of account, inside the chart of account, you are creating the chart of account, assigning the chart of account, creating account group. When you talk about creating account group, T code was O B D four. O B D four is GL account group, O B D three is vendor account group, O B D two is customer account group. Similar logic for account group two, three, four.
Yes, sir.
Alright, meaning more or less, everything will be based on a logic in SAP. You need to understand how these are logically interconnected so that minimum effort will make you make you understand the different points without any much effort.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Yes.
Now, if I go to ECC, I am not sure what company code we created here, but let me check. I will go to display document, I believe in ECC, we created a company code, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, Motorola.
Not sure what I created, let me check.
I think A J B nine.
A J B nine is what we created, okay? A J B nine, so what we will do, we will set up AP first. When we go to AP, first what we need to do, we need to create account group called O B D three.
O B D three.
I will go to O B D three here. When you go to O B D three, now observe the screen, in S4 Hana system, it is exactly the same screen without any change. Am I clear?
Yes, sir.
I am doing it now in ECC, in S4, when you practice, when we start configuring AP in S4, it is exactly the same screen. I am on ECC now. I will add a new entry. For now, I will create only one account group, similar to my company code. Our company code in ECC is A J B nine. I will put same thing, A J B nine, vendors. Clear?
Yes, sir.
And then proceed to save, straight forward. Continue. Done. Come back.
Yes, sir.
Vendor account group is created. Next one is to create vendor number ranges, X K N one. Go to X K N one. Click on change interval, one point here which we need to understand. Currently, number ranges are updated or it is blank.
Updated, sir. It's already updated.
Currently, there are number ranges, but in any project, when you work tomorrow, this screen is fully blank. Because here it is a test server, many people are practicing. For their practice, everybody will create a different different number ranges, right? But in the project, nobody will practice, nobody will make anything. It will be you who will create the number range, it will be you who will do it. So whatever you want, it is available in the project. In the practice environment, it may be a little tricky point to understand the number, but don't think too much about it. It will not create any confusion in the project. It might create confusion only in the practice. So to do it, what you do, go to interval on the top. If you go to interval, is there any option called free intervals?
Yes, sir, free intervals.
If you click on free interval, it will show if there is any number range which is not used by anyone. Because we wanted to use a number range which is currently not used by anyone. Is that the logic or not?
Yes, sir.
We wanted to use a number range which is currently not in use. To get those numbers which are not used by anyone, go to interval, click on free interval, whatever you get, you can pick it up. I will simply take A J. I will put some number range interval. Continue. Scroll down to A J, this one, five forty one two, let's say I will take five fifty. Continue and then save it. One number range I was able to create it. Next one, assignment of vendor number ranges to vendor account group, in which T code?
O B A S. In real time, there is, it's a blank sheet, right? You're saying?
Yes.
So how, in that time, how we will create? So, uh, in that time, how we will create new code, uh?
That time I'll make you understand, once we are in a position to configure at basic level. Then I will make everybody understand how exactly this is configured in a project based on the exact project scenario, okay? Now we are only understanding how to do the configuration, then we will understand how exactly it is configured in a project. Understood, right? Now, as usual, we are only getting a familiarity to the screen so that when you start. Configuring the system, there is no point of any confusion, because that time you are not looking at the screen for the first time, am I right?
Yes.
Yes, mate.
Now for the assignment, what is the T code?
O B A S.
O B A S. A S, let us go to O B A S. In this, as usual, go to position, it is asking for account group, we created A J B nine. What is the number range?
A J.
I created A J, click on save, continue, done. And then tolerance group. O B.
O B A three.
If you go to position, pick up company code A J B nine, we would have already created A J B nine.
Sir, you search with that tolerance group.
Did not choose company code. Group, we will keep it blank, we created it, right? I searched the group, oh, sorry. Right, A J B nine is already created, so it is not required again. Come back, now four configurations are completed or not?
Completed, sir.
How long it took?
The same like in S four Hana as well, see, like these settings.
No change in this, said. Hundred percent same, not even ninety nine point nine nine percent, it is hundred without any condition.
Okay.
Okay, now four settings we were able to create it, next we need to create a reconciliation G L account in F S double zero. Let us go to F S double zero. We are talking about accounts payable reconciliation account. Accounts payable is part of asset or it is part of liability.
Liability, sir.
Liability, so accounts payable to be created under liability account group. Liability account number series starts from what?
Two, so liability two, two.
Two, so click on new entries, I will take something like two thousand, like triple zero two, okay?
Yes.
I will select account group liabilities, this is a balance sheet account. I will put like accounts payable. Same thing here also, accounts payable, control data. So far, we have given zero zero one, here also zero zero one as usual, but this is a reconciliation account. You have to open reconciliation account for account type, accounts payable is all about what?
Vendor. Enders.
Vendor, so you choose vendor, meaning. The moment you put it, this will become a control account or this will become a reconciliation account. It can be posted only through vendor account, okay? Go to create bank interest, field status group, so far what we used, G double zero one, right? Now you have to use G zero sixty seven reconciliation account. Select this, continue and then save the account, only one change. Is field status group G zero sixty seven reconciliation. Second change is reconciliation account is K for vendor, D for customer. Type description as usual, accounts payable is a liability, two series account, accounts payable description. Now straight away, we need to create a vendor, after this you'll have to create vendor master. To create vendor master, it is F K zero one in E C C. We are currently specifically talking about E C C system. In E C C to create a vendor, it is F K zero one. Let me go to F K zero one screen, keep one more window, F K zero one. Now it is talking about vendor, vendor will be allocated when you click on save. So leave the vendor number blank, company code A J B nine, account group, what was our account group?
Same A J B nine.
Same, A J B nine, put this and then click on enter. It will open a screen, title, if you are creating vendor as a person, select Mister, Miss, Mrs, whatever it is. Otherwise you select company, understood, right?
Yes, sir.
Let me select a company, I will simply take, let's say. Or I'll take. Lenovo. Computers Limited. Search term I'll put Lenovo, address, I'll put. Ignore my address, straight this. Okay, this is not available, leave it. As you keep pressing enter, you will keep on moving to next screen. What is this screen on the top, you will find the heading, what is the current screen heading?
Address. Address.
Address, when you press enter, it will take you to the next screen. This is control, nothing is required as of now here, press enter. Payment transaction as of now, nothing is required, press enter. Contact person as of now, nothing is required, press enter. Accounting information for accounting, this is required. Here you need to connect this vendor account with a corresponding reconciliation account. This is where your sub ledger and main ledger will get connected. This vendor is related to which accounts payable G L account, you may be having different kind of accounts payable. Like we talked yesterday, domestic vendor, import vendor, intercompany vendor, employee vendor and then so on. For every category of vendor, you have a separate accounts payable G L account. Based on the vendor, the corresponding reconciliation account must be selected. In this example, we have only one, straight away pick it and then press enter. Okay, press enter, press enter, at the last moment, it will tell. You are at the last screen whether you want to save it, click on yes, so that vendor will be created. Are we able to create a vendor now or not?
Yes, sir, create.
Simple task or difficult task?
Simple task.
Right, it is a simple task, vendor is created, five forty one. After creating vendor, we need to create vendor invoice. This will be created using F dash forty three. Now let us go to F dash forty three, when you do expenses, that is where you bring the. Others please go unmute when you are not talking.
Ajish, uh, could you please, uh, explain us about the reconciliation account in detail, why it is required?
We will talk about it in detail, after posting one entry, then we will discuss about it. The further sessions are all about in detail explanation, discussion about these things, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Now to create the invoice, we need to purchase something, let us go to F S double zero. Currently, we don't have any expenses, let me create one expense to do a purchase, what I'll do, I'll click on. One expense, expense we are starting from four series, I will take four thousand, triple zero one. Let me take expenses, P N L statement account, let's say I am receiving. Rental income or rental this one, or let's say services, I'll put. Something like. Repairs and maintenance possible?
Yes, sir.
Repairs and maintenance, control data. Line item display, sort key zero zero one. This will be G double zero one, proceed to save. G L is created on the same logic, then we have to create invoice, F dash forty three. And this is the document type K R. I will put this same date, I'll put, let's say. Invoice. Invoice here. And then when I press enter, it is telling period is not open, we need to open the period. Let me open the screen, O B fifty two to open the period. Go to position, it will be A J B nine. Eight is opened, I'll extend it till nine for everything. Save this, continue. And then check one more time. Enter, now you are getting a message, number range one nine, nineteen is missing. What is the T code for creating a number range?
F B N one.
F B N one. Go to F B N one, pass the company code A J B nine, click on change interval. Insert a new entry, number range is one nine, year twenty twenty five. Logic, number range followed by all zeros one, number range followed by all nines, strictly ten digits, save it. Continue, come back. And go back to the same screen, press enter. Now it is asking vendor, we know the vendor. What is the posting key? Posting key thirty one, thirty one is representing vendor credit, we have Lenovo computer. Select this vendor, take any amount is okay, let me take somewhere around forty thousand. And I will straight away put. Invoice and then forty, expense accounted debit. Select expense account, repairs and maintenance, enter. Same amount, I will put profit center, probably we would have created A J B nine zero one. This does not exist. What we created? Test we created, put the profit center, go to document. Simulate your accounting entry is like repairs and maintenance debit, posting key forty is representing the G L debit. Posting key thirty one is representing vendor credit. Okay, and then click on post. You are getting a message, document number. And document type for ledger A J not found, in E C C, document, number range. Document type to be mentioned specifically for non leading ledger.
Yes, sir.
Now what we'll have to go, if you double click on this, it will give a hyperlink, click on the first hyperlink. Open this. D, sorry, K R is not maintained, add a new entry. Put K R, same number range A J, save it. Come back, similarly here also. Insert. K R, number range A J, save it. Come back, come back. And then this one also, number range is already there, come back, press enter. Simulate one more time and then proceed to post, now the entry is posted.
Yes, sir, document was posted.
If I go to document, click on display, this is how I am able to display the invoice. Repairs and maintenance accounted debit, in short, expense accounted debit, Lenovo computer vendor account credit, right? Now, if I go to credit memo. When I say if I go to credit memo, it is about making a written, invoice amount is how much?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand, now to see the vendor line item report. You have this, create or display vendor line item report, it is F B L one N. Let us go to this vendor line item report, F B L one N, to see what is the outstanding. If I put F B L one N, outstanding as shown today for vendor five four one in company code A J B nine. Execute, what is the amount?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand plus or forty thousand minus?
Forty thousand minus.
Forty thousand minus, meaning it is a liability rate, liability shows the credit balance. We are liable to pay forty thousand to Lenovo Computers Limited, assuming. Out of this forty thousand, there is a return for five thousand. If there is a return for five thousand, what should be the net outstanding?
Thirty five thousand.
Thirty five.
Thirty five thousand. Now this adjustment or this return will be created towards credit memo. What we will do, we will do a credit memo. Let me go to vendor credit memo. Let's say F dash forty one, is this correct?
Yes, sir.
Vendor. I'll put. F dash forty one. Vendor credit memo, in this same data I'll put, I will write. Credit memo, credit memo, for credit memo, vendor account will be debited, that is why posting key is automatically. Set as twenty one, I will make you understand everything in detail in the next session in an Excel sheet, okay? Five forty one.
Five forty one.
This is again the same problem, number range seventeen is missing. Go to. Another screen, F B N one, company code, number range. Insert seventeen number range, year twenty twenty five, logic seventeen, all zeros one. Seventeen, all nines. Save this, come back. And press enter, amount it would be, let's say. Five thousand is what we decided. Credit memo. And then you'll have to credit the G L account now, the same expense, because there is a return. Five thousand, same profit center.
Just.
Go to document, click on simulate, click on post, this is what is happening. And same thing, double click on the error, click on the hyperlink. Because in SAP E C C system, every document type must be assigned to a non leading ledger. In S four, this is not required, click on this is setting, somebody should go unmute, those who have background noise. Do not unmute yourself while you are not talking. And the document type what we are using now is K G, put same number range, save it. Same thing, this is setting also, non leading ledger, new entry. K G, same number range, save this. Come back, come back, come back, close the message, now do this simulation. One more time and then proceed to post, entry is now posted. If you go to vendor line item report, we are expecting to see liability as how much? Thirty five thousand.
Minus credit balance.
Go to report, click on refresh, can we see thirty five thousand net outstanding?
Yes, sir, thirty five.
Correct, net outstanding thirty five thousand in vendor line item report F B L one N. Similarly, if you look at vendor.
Balance.
Balance report. Which is F K ten N. Let us look at how it looks like, if you go to F K ten N vendor report. In short, balance report F K ten N, we are expecting the same report here also.
Yes, sir.
Execute. You are able to see vendor account balance, thirty five thousand per period number time, debit posted for five thousand. Credit posted for forty thousand, difference between debit and credit, user balance thirty five thousand, this is the cumulative balance. This is balance for the month, this is balance year to date, everybody is aware, for the month balance, Y T D balance, yes or no?
Yes, sir, year to date.
Yes.
Cumulative balance is all about Y T D balance, balance is all about monthly balance, thirty five thousand. Come back, this is the balance report, similarly we have line item browser. Which is F B L. One H. If you look at F B L one H, this is the. I'll show it now. If you go to F B L one H. Same thing, give your company code, keep your vendor blank, just execute it, it will give all vendors at one go. This is what, five four one is our vendor?
Five four one, sir, yes.
Okay, I think there is some issue with this report in the S C C it seems. This will give you the report for all vendors in single screen. Though you have two hundred, five hundred thousand vendor, every vendor wise, whatever is your outstanding, you can see in a single screen, okay? This probably we will check the same report in S four Hana system, in E C C, there is a technical problem with this report.
Is it same as line item dispatcher?
Same as line item, but in one go you can see multiple vendor report.
I mean all vendors balance in a single.
Right, right.
Okay.
Okay, now you can also check vendor aging report, now vendor aging report, standard report is. I D C N A P. This is a standard T code for vendor aging report, copy this, go to S A P. And then put this.
Should not active.
Okay, this is not active in this, let me not do anything in E C C. Okay, this is another report which I will show you in S four Hana system. Then you have vendor master table, vendor transaction table, table we will be discussing, not now, maybe a little further we will talk about table. As of now, we will just make a note of it, but we will not update anything related to table, just not to make sure, just not to complicate anything. Okay, this is all about vendor what we did now, the pending point is payment, vendor payment is basically. F dash fifty three. Now how much are we supposed to do, pay to the vendor?
Five thousand, sir.
Five thousand. Thirty five thousand.
Thirty five thousand, right, not five thousand, thirty five thousand.
Yes, yes.
Right, now I'll go to F dash fifty three. Enter. Let's say I will put payment. Payment, I am going to process the payment.
Five forty one.
I'll take a cash account, ideally we should take a bank account, this is only for the testing purpose, I am picking a cash, but it has to be strictly bank data, meaning bank G L account. Amount thirty five thousand.
Thirty five thousand.
Okay, now it is asking, number range fifteen is missing. Update number range. F B N one.
You are not understanding the number is fifteen seventeen.
This will make you understand, once we start working on S four Hana as our regular practice, I will make you understand everything, this is only to see how system works, okay? So that before you do the configuration, you are getting an idea on every screen now, right?
Okay.
Yeah, this is only to get a screen familiarity, nothing beyond that. Number range is now updated.
Ajay, sorry.
Yes.
These number range, number ranges are S A P standards, right, this nineteen seventeen.
S A P standard, yes, all are S A P standard, everywhere these are same, E C C S four, everywhere you get the same.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Now vendor number five forty one. Now I will select these two, amount entered thirty five thousand, amount assigned is thirty five thousand. Go to document, simulate it, this is your cash account credit, vendor accounted about. If I try to click on post, same message, it is expecting, assign this a document type in the non leading lecture.
Yes.
Double click on it, click on this hyperlink, open this is setting, select non leading lecture, this, K Z. Number range, continue. Same thing even for this is setting, new entries. K Z, same number range and then save it, come back. Close the message, post it. Simulate again, post it, now the payment is also posted. After making the payment, should there be any outstanding or zero outstanding?
Zero outstanding.
Zero outstanding.
Zero outstanding, if I now go to refresh the report, it's all gone now, no items are selected.
Yes, sir, no opening.
Meaning liability becomes zero, nothing is open, everything is cleared, if you go to cleared item, you can see forty thousand is cleared for. Sorry, the forty thousand invoice. And then, sorry, what is this, forty thousand invoice and five thousand credit note, thirty five thousand payment is made. Now overall, this is all about your accounts payable, any complication you found here?
No, sir.
It is very simple, very straightforward, will not take more than one hour. Maximum is one hour for you to practice it, provided you understood concept. If you don't understand the concept, there is no point of you practice multiple time, but we need to make sure, first now everybody has got screen familiarity on E C C.
Yes, sir.
All right, and then what I did now or what we did now for accounts payable, receivable I will not do it. Receivable I will not show, I will not do also, I will only show, I will only configure vendor in S four Hana also. And customer in S four Hana system, you will be configuring on your own, understood, right?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
I will only write the example, what amount you need to take, what amount you are supposed to collect, same thing, based on the accounts payable understanding, you need to configure receivable. Post the entries, see the report, ensure yes, it is correct now. That is where you will start realizing the difference between A P A R, because going forward, I'll give assignment in such a way. Same transaction, I want you to create one side as a customer, the other side as a vendor, customer report, vendor report. When you look at, it has to be exactly the same, except number difference, plus thousand, minus thousand, plus twenty, minus twenty, am I correct?
Yes, sir, correct.
Because customer vendor, we treat as the same and then we start posting the interest. Then you'll have to realize, okay, if my A P understanding is correct, I am supposed to get this much negative amount. If my A R understanding is also correct, I am supposed to get this much positive amount.
Yes.
Then you will start realize, okay, my understanding is now correct, I am able to create my own example. Clear so far?
Yes, sir.
Just what I want you to do is, go through the settings, whatever we have listed in the same sequence. Look at the screen or look at the transaction code related to accounts payable and then accounts receivable, whatever we updated only to that extent. Remaining one, we will see practically on the system, while executing, we will update the T code so that you will have a clarity, what is this T code? How the T code looks like, how we execute the T code, understood, right? If I simply put a T code, you will not understand what it is, how it exactly works in the project. All right, let me stop this recording now.